Evening. This time I'd like to call back to order the meeting for the final 20, 25 millage rates and budget, budget hearing. Would you please silence all electronic devices and stand with me for the invocation and pledge allegiance?
Oh merciful Creator, your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of your good gifts. Amen.
Amen. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the row.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Present.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Here.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Here. Let it be known that we have all five members here today and we have a quorum. Now we have the procedures to adopt the final 20, 25 millage rates budget hearing. Second public hearing, September 17th, which is 5:15 in Newport Ritchie. Okay? This is the final budget hearing to adopt the fiscal year 2025 budget for the border county commissioners of Pasco County, Florida. Citizens will be given, will be provided an opportunity to speak during this public comments portion of the, of the hearing. And does the clerk have a proof of publication?
Yes, sir. Proof of publication in the Tampa Bay Times on Sunday, September 15th, 2024.
Okay. In accordance with the Florida statute of 200.065, the first issue to be discussed is the recommended millage rates and the percentage changes in the rollback rates.
I can go ahead. Evening Commissioners. Eric Breitenbach, Assistant County Administrator for Internal Services. Chairman, members of the board, the aggregate millage rate as advertised on the trim notices was 10.2645 mils, which represents an 11.34% increase from the aggregate rolled back rate of 9.2192 mils. The reason the aggregate millage rate is higher is because the total taxable value increased between last year and this year, generating additional revenue levied for the same millage rate. Table one in your handout shows the millage rates for the various county levies and a comparison of the recommended millage rates to the rollback rates in the prior year adopted millage, millage rates. Rather than read this chart into the record, we have provided copies to each commissioner, board records, and members of the audience. At the first public hearing on the budget, the Board of County Commissioners adopted a budget based upon the millage rates used in the trim notices each property owner received. The only change from the proposed budget set in July to the tentative budget set during the first public hearing is that the board reduced the parks capital maintenance MSTU from 0.1712 mils to 0.0000 mils. I'd like to give a brief summary of the general fund and transportation trust fund budgets, stating the millage rates, the percentage change from the rollback rate, and the reasons for such a change. The millage rate for the general fund is 7.4292 mils, which is a 5.08% increase from the rollback rate of 7.0703. The millage rate is a reduction from last year's millage rate and is a result of the board's direction from this morning's board meeting. The county realized a 14.1% increase in taxable assessed values over the past year. Compared to the current year, the general fund expenditure budget represents an increase of $87 million. The main factors for this include fully funding the sheriff's budget request, including 20 additional deputies, implementing phase one of the D-shift for rescue personnel, operational expenditures for the expanded detention center, wage increases for the PBA and IAFF unions, and a wage increase based on a compensation and classification study for board and constitutional officers and employees. Prior action by the Florida Legislature eliminated the requirement for a mandatory transportation ad valorem tax. No transportation millage was levied last year, and we propose no millage be assessed this year for the transportation fund. I would ask that the board accept general, accept public comment and then vote on the general fund and the transportation trust fund millage rates and associated budgets. The minimum vote to levy the general fund millage rate is a simple majority or three votes, according to maximum millage rate calculations.
Does anyone wish to speak to the board regarding the general fund and transportation trust fund? Do we have people signed up?
We do, sir. So I am going to call you to the podium. I'm going to kind of do it three at a time. So if you hear your name, just stand in line in the order that I call you. When you come to the podium, please give your name and address for the record, and then you can speak. You'll have your three minutes. All right. So the first three that I'm going to call are Christopher Nelson, Peggy Byrne, and Daniel Lauffer.
Name and address for the clerk.
Hi, my, my name is Christopher Nelson. I'm 2200 Branding Iron Court, Trinity, Florida. I'm the vice president for West Pasco Girls Fastpitch Softball Association. I'm here on behalf of the general fund for the Parks and Rec portion of this. Our league's been around for over 30 years. We moved from Oak Ridge to Starkey Ranch District Park. Thank you all for voting for that field to go in there. We went over there under the stipulation that, you know, Parks and Rec was going great and everything's going great. We get over there and we got one field taken away because baseball needs one of the fields. What that means is that we don't have any baseball fields, apparently, because we were supposed to have four fields, go from two to four, so we could increase, and now we can't increase. We have over almost 300 girls signed up, 22 teams last year, just for our West Pasco Girls Fastpitch alone. You know, so it's great, houses are being built, but the infrastructure needs to be along with it, and I don't think Parks and Rec's infrastructure has enough money and enough resources for them to do what needs to be done right now. Our youth is the, the next generation, you know? If our youth doesn't have anywhere to go, where are they going to go? They're going to be on the streets, causing trouble? They're going to be at computers? There's sex trafficking, there's predators. I'd rather have them at the ball fields or in some kind of a youth program doing something. The other thing is, I mean, there's 45 baseball fields and 12 girls softball fields. I mean, I think girls youth sports is getting underrated in this whole entire thing. You go down to Drew Street in Pasco, in Pinellas County, whole entire street is girls fast pitch softball. ESPN puts on a girls' fast, fast pitch for the whole colleges down there, you know? I mean, they bring in all this stuff. There's just a lot that we could do. Me and my wife went up to the Dixie National Meeting. We secured the bid for the 2026 World Series to come here to Starkey Ranch District Park. So we now have the World Series coming here. We can do a lot. We can help Pasco County, but we need help from Pasco County to help Parks and Rec and Parks Rec to help us in order for all this to happen. And it just doesn't seem like there's a, that's happening. It seems like there's a disconnect somewhere along the pathways because, you know, we've tried, we're doing everything, and it just doesn't seem to be working. We're getting kicked back saying there's not enough people to do the fields, there's not enough this, there's not enough that. We don't have this, we don't have that. So Parks and Rec needs money.
Your time's up.
No, no, he has another minute.
Oh, you've got one more minute.
You've got another minute.
They need the money.
I was looking.
You know, families are going to be moving in, you know? Like I said, I, we secured 2026. We can bring in state tournament, we can bring in World Series, we can bring in tournaments, we can bring in all this stuff, but we gotta have Parks and Rec and we gotta have help in order to do all this stuff. So I'm, I'm asking that you help what I enjoy, which is the, the youth of our next generation, and help us to help them have parks and recreation, athletic fields, and everything else to go to, so that we can continue what we're doing. So thank you all for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We will try again next year. I'm sorry it went to zero, but we'll try again next year.
Go ahead. Next. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Peggy Byrne, B-Y-R-A-N-E, 12363 East Point Drive, Dade City. So the millage rate proposed is an increase. It's too high. The answer to that should be no. Perhaps the reality of what homeowners are facing has escaped all but Commissioners Waitman and Mariano. Everything is going up, folks, and our infrastructure is inadequate. TECO need only ask for more money and it seems to be given. For the record, it's not the taxpayers' job to help TECO perform better. The last rate increases were so it was prepared for hurricane season. Since little of those monies were used for that, the rate should have decreased. It did not. Now we have the sheer stupidity of comments like this. Rate hikes will help insulate customers from higher costs. It's just ridiculous, and we have to wonder if that CEO obviously had gone to the same word salad school as Kamala Harris. Also, since TECO's a foreign-owned corporation, the county gave them an interest-free loan the last time. They should have been told to go and get an American bridge loan, like all American companies do. So why is everything going up in this county? The answer to that seems simple. Overdevelopment, under the guise of a master plan. There are many residents that have attended both planning board and county commissioners' meetings where every public comment was against what was being presented. You, the commissioners, voted for them time and time again. We have lost much acreage in the rural protection zone to developers like Wilton Simpson, who buy the land cheap and then get it rezoned by his friend, that would be you, in order to fill his coffers. We need a moratorium on building so services and infrastructure can catch up. We can then charge developers for all of the upgrades required, not just some of them, and taxpayers will have to clean up the mess. Going online, it is particularly offensive when you, the commissioners, list the core values of Pasco County, including this little gem. We place our citizens and customers first. That is baloney, and frankly, it means that the county commissioners are ignoring the wishes of their constituents and are indeed violating the core values of the county. Please do not think that taxpayers have not noticed. We have, and you would be wrong. I hope that you'll look at your costs in the future and live within your means. You are making the taxpayers of this county have to live within their means, people that are born and raised in this county, and I've met quite a few. I'm not from here. It saddens me to see people telling me and hear people telling me they have to move out because they can't afford to live in this county. That is through the management of what the county commissioners are doing here. Please find a way to reduce your costs, but do support things that, that support safety like the police and obviously the corrections offices that are here tonight. Safety is pivotal for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Daniel Lauffer. I live at 1425 Jutland Drive in Trinity. And last year, I paid $4,300 for road repaving in front of my house. Now in Pasco County, the roads will be included in the tax bill this year. So my question is, I will be getting, will I be getting a refund because I made a full payment for the roads that, under the new tax law, I would have paid for 10 to 15 years worth of taxes? If the new tax law goes into effect this year, I will be paying double taxes for years. I also heard people who decided to put over 10 years with a lien on their house will be taken off and they'll start fresh with the new tax law. The lien taken off and start, I'm retired on a fixed income, and it's not fair to be double charged when we take the money out of our little savings. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Do you want to address that?
Yeah.
Well, we can, but...
Yeah, because someone else may have that same question.
Go ahead and address.
We can address that during the presentation if the board likes.
Okay.
Okay. So the next three individuals signed up are Jessica Haskins, followed by Stephanie Polk,
Name and address for the clerk.
My name is Jessica Haskins. It's 13725 Reindeer Circle, Hudson, Florida.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Nature Coast Bolts Football Association. We are a little new and up and coming football organization out of Shady Hills. We have been operating out of Elise Logan. I'm not here to complain, I'm not here to beg for anything, I just wanted to show our appreciation that we have been able to purchase a dilapidated league and now turn it into something that's been such an inspiration to Shady Hills. Shady Hills is not an affluent neighborhood. We have been bringing tons of kids into our organization. We started last year with over 90 kids. We took those 90 kids and we took an eight-year team to the state championship and won second place. We also have our cheerleaders who went and won regionals. From our success, we are now at 159 this year, with sponsoring over 30%. It's over $15,000 of our funds that we are paying for these kids to be there that are off the streets. What we're asking for is just a little bit of help to see if we can update Shady Hills back behind the baseball fields. Other than our commissioner, I'm not sure if you have been back there. It is a little slice of heaven. It is so peaceful back there. We are there five to six nights a week with these kids, and we have our concession stand. Our concession stands doesn't have screens. Our flies are coming through, and some of the food that these children are eating, that's their only home-cooked meal at our concession field at night. We are in need of our scoreboard that is going, that needs to be fixed, because we have our first home game coming up, and these kids love seeing their scores on that scoreboard. But we don't have that. We don't even have pads for our uprights. So we don't know if we're going to get fined from our organization if we don't have the pads on there. And we understand that. We're going to make do, we're going to keep going, the league is up and running. Another thing we wanted to bring forth is, since we won the second place in the state last year, that elite organization has asked us to host a spring tournament, which brings in over 5,000 people on a weekend. And to do that in Shady Hills would be incredible. But we only have one field, which we understand, but we can branch out. But I can't imagine all the hotel, all the restaurants around here, what that would do for three months of games. So we're just asking if you can go visit it, see what you can do to help us out. If not, we understand, but we want to make sure that these kids have a safe environment and make sure that our league grows immensely, because we are all about sponsoring the kids that, we don't turn anybody away. Even if we don't have that fund, we're out there shaking the helmets, we're out there doing fundraisers as much as we can. But we just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to go in there, and we'll make do with what we have. But if there is any way that you can help us update it to make it look like baseball, that would be amazing. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Is your email and contact information on this sheet?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I will get in touch with you. I will come visit.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
The name of your organization?
Nature Coast Bolts.
And I've got some ideas for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Go Bolts.
Thank you.
You have her name there? I do.
Got one or two here.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Polk. I'm the president from Dade City Little League, and with me is Melissa Schuler. Sorry.
Melissa Schuler, Vice President of Dade City Little League.
I'm not sure if what we're here to talk about has already been discussed, and that's, I'm piggybacking off the first people that talked. We have been running Dade, we have not been running Dade City Little League, but Dade City Little League has been in the system over 70 years. Over 40 years ago, we were given a little piece of property off Gene Nelson Boulevard called Burks Park. We have, we had 325 student, no, sorry, I'm a teacher too. 325 players last year, made us 26 teams functioning off four, only four fields.
Of the nine that we have.
There are, we say nine, there are technically eight because Field Six became a soccer, a field, but of those eight fields, we were only allowed to use four. We were told that having eight teams of softball was not enough to warrant having two fields for that. We have been told over and over during the district tournaments that we host, the regional tournaments that we host, how great our park would be to host tournaments. When I've reached out and asked about how to go about doing that, we haven't really gotten much information on that, but it's something we'd like to do and something we'd like to offer, and as the previous person said, it brings in a lot of money, not just for our league, but for the county, for the hotels, for the restaurants, but there are things that we need to be able to do. We are fighting for our park versus adult players, adult leagues.
Travel ball.
Travel ball. And what's going to happen is, if we don't really get a better, I don't know, handle over our park and over our fields, we're going to be overrun by travel ball, and we're not going to be able to sustain.
You still have a minute. You still have one minute.
We do need people. It's hard to talk to anybody at, you know, at Parks and Recreation when everybody leaves at three. We just found out that on occasion, we can ask for someone to stay on the weekend, like if we have a tournament or something, but it's really hard to run a league when you can't really talk to anybody after 3 o'clock. We've had issues with people coming in and being disrespectful or trying to take over the league park that is being rented out by us or other use, other things like that. We gave up our batting cages. We were told that we would get new ones. We don't have new batting cages. We have no place for them to warm up on the below acre, or the below fields that we have. So there's just a lot of things that we really need your attention on and hope that you'll...
Basically, just to get our fields back?
Yeah.
All, all eight of them?
As much as we can. Thank you for your time.
We'll try again next year.
Yep.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Joseph Lapardo. I live at 4651 Sawgrass Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, Florida. Congratulations, Commissioner Yeager, on your victory in the primaries. I feel a little embarrassed to be here for my little problem that I have, but I think that it will encompass more things if I get this out. Basically, it's going to be involved with road paving again. Let's see. I moved here in 88, been in the house that I'm at since 98, so 26 years. Debbie hit in 08, I think it was, and the roads got demolished. They came and resurfaced in my area, Cypress Lakes, which is Mitchell Boulevard, that area, and they neglected to do my road. I have all the documentation and all the paperwork and Google Maps and all that stuff, but basically the road didn't get done. And then over time, we have documented over 1,000 vehicles a day traveling by my house, so much so that I came in last year and requested a three-way stop sign be put in at Cypress Lakes and Sawgrass, which the county did, realized it needed it, and they put it in just to kind of slow traffic down. But they didn't do anything about the road, paving and all that. Now we have, of course, the rainy season has come, and we have a debacle with the roads, as you know. I know everybody's on the east side taking care of the flooding in Zephyr Hills, and they're kind of not doing the west side right now, fixing potholes and whatnot. But what's happening is the road's crumbling up, patching, it's just not going to work anymore, and I know that we have reassessed the way we do our paving. I think what I would like to do is at least find out if I can get on the list to get my road paved and the surrounding area paved correctly. And my question to you guys is, do you have a schedule for road paving? Do we have any of that going on? Because maybe I just need to go right to traffic, which I have talked to them before, and Road and Bridge. I can't really get an answer out of them, because they'll say, well, it's six weeks out before we can patch the road, and we don't know when your road's going to be paved.
And there's a schedule.
Is there a schedule? Is there somebody that I could talk to in Road and Bridge other than bothering the manager?
I'll have somebody take care of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Brantford.
Okay.
Next, first.
So the next individual did not leave their name, but the organization is Florida Free State, followed by Daniel Hagan, and then Janine Duffy.
Actually, my name's on there.
It says on file, sir. Can you give your name?
That was my address, but I gave my name. My name's Brian Paris. It says, my, my address is on file. But anyway, Brian Paris, on file, my address. I disagree with raising any fees against we, the people. We're already struggling in this economy. It's ridiculous. I know if I'm a small business owner, that if I ran my business like you guys run the county, I would be in default. So I can't go to other people and say, hey, can you help me with my business, mismanagement of my business skills because, oh, I just spent too much? And then I would have to show an audit. How come we never get an audit from our government of where our money goes? We're taking in the most taxes we've ever taken in, in the history of this county, and we're watching our land be destroyed. As someone who's from here, second generation, I've watched my county get destroyed. I know, I know this is supposed to be a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. I know it's not, though, because it's a, it's a government of the development and the developers. It's disgusting what is going on, man. This is ridiculous. Our tax paying money, where it says in the Constitution actually is voluntary, is supposed to go to public safety and infrastructure. And yeah, we should pay all our first responders and thank God for them, and I appreciate them, and, and thank you each and every first responder for your service. But it, it is not supposed to go to, oh, let's, let's develop this and do that. No. And it's also infrastructure. One of you guys stated last year, it takes eight years to get a road done. Why aren't we developing on the same timeline? I feel like I live in New York, Pasco County. It's ridiculous. Soon, we're all going to be on top of each other. Hey, man, you got, I know we're in, we're peasants now, and we just have a little bit of food, but you got this, maybe barter with you. Like, it's ridiculous. We're all going to be in the parks, sleeping. We, we need the parks, so in case we do have to go sleep in them. It's ridiculous. Come on, man. In this economy, we shouldn't be raising nothing on anybody. There's people out there barely getting food. You see on Facebook posts all the time, hey, you know, I'm trying to feed my kids, has anybody got a few dollars? But yet here, we're going to raise fees and taxes on people? Come on, man. It's real. And then last year, one of y'all stated during the China virus lockdowns that you guys never locked anybody down or forced anybody to wear masks. This isn't obviously for the people who were elected after that, so, but for small business owners, we closed for takeout only during the China, during the virus mandates around 40 days per guidelines, and then opened after that 25% capacity, then 50% capacity. We definitely took a hit. One of my employees, Kristen Parrish, was laid off. But one of you stated that you never shut any businesses down and were never forced to wear masks, and that's a lie. I'm calling that out. You're wrong, because people were shut down. And then this is, we got to develop, I, I'm actually, and then I stated we shouldn't, we should have a moratorium on development, but someone also stated that's illegal. Well, what's illegal is taxation without representation, and we need to not develop so much right now. It's ridiculous. I know, I'm...
All right, thank you for your comments. If you continue clapping, then you might have to be leaving the room. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Daniel Hagan. I'm here to represent the Police Benevolent Association. Good evening, County Commissioners. On behalf of the...
Address.
Oh, 12484.
Wait, wait, you might be protected.
Oh, you protected?
Yes.
I should be.
Yeah, you're protected. Excuse me. I don't need to know where you live.
On behalf of the Police Benevolent Association, I would like to express our sincere gratitude for your unwavering support to our Corrections Department. Your dedication to ensuring that our correctional officers and staff have the resources they need to succeed is both invaluable and deeply appreciated. The work we do is challenging, but it is only made possible by your continued support and the fact that you have recognized the importance of investing in public safety. Your continued commitment to providing the necessary funding, staffing, and tools directly impacts the safety and well-being of not only our officers and staff, but the entire community. We know the public service requires tough decisions, and we are incredibly fortunate to have leadership that prioritizes well-being of both our personnel and the public that we serve. Your support allows us to create an environment where our correctional officers and staff can do their best work for our community each and every day. Once again, thank you for your ongoing support and commitment to the safety and success of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Janine Duffy? Okay, there you are.
Janine Duffy, 5550 Front Drive, Holiday, Florida, 34690. I actually just have a bunch of questions, whether you answer them or not, it doesn't really matter. I'm looking for more itemized expenses and, you know, all the way down to what our, our trucks, how much gas they use, or what the salaries are, or where all the money actually does go. Where can I find that information? Where can everybody find that information? I don't, I can't seem to find it on the website or anywhere around that. Also, I know you've heard about the condo crisis, so I'm curious how many people here in Pasco County are now suffering from those insatiable assessments, and how many of those people are elderly? I also would like to say that I spent my Saturday night kid-free listening to the Affordable Housing Workshop. I hope you all remember it. I hope you all remember it. It's really fresh in my mind. You were explained for quite some time, even though it was May third, I believe, May twenty-first. You were deeply explained how bad the affordable housing situation is in this county for the people that work at these convenience stores and these fast food restaurants and the school bus drivers and the teachers and the people that clean your houses. And so when you decide to raise anything, you need to realize that you're a part of what's going to put people on the street, more of them, a lot more of them. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Okay, so the next three individuals signed up are Tom Salato, Melissa Jones, and Kristy Zimmer.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Thomas Salato, one-eight-two-three-five, Florleton Drive. That's in Spring Hill, three-four-six-one-zero. That's Pasco County side. There's been a lot said already that, I don't, I'm not going to repeat, so I'm going to ad lib a little bit. But my home, or many homes in this county have aged forty years or more, have seen a significant increase in property taxes and value, thus creating a significant increase in the property tax assessment. This without consideration of any new homes being built. Where is the surplus of that money going, and can we be more prudential in the use of that surplus in funding? Developers have received a record number of tax savings, incentives, and impact fee deferments. Commercial businesses have received forgivable loans with zero-point-five percent interest rates, unmet conditions with no accountability. This loss of tax revenue has put the additional tax burden on the residents. Pasco County is no longer a county where we need to incentivize any building. We should be controlling our growth, not jeopardizing our rural landscape, and we should be preserving our natural resources. There stands many vacant buildings, both new and old, that could be incentivized to improve, repurpose, and renovate without the environmental impact that new construction has been having on our county. As you review the budget today, I would ask the Commission to consider not increasing taxes again. Over the last six years, my tax bills increased thirty percent. With the proposed tax increase considered today, my tax bill will have increased another ten percent from last year. The affordability of paying my taxes is not my issue. I must make it afford, I make it affordable because I must. When discussing today's budget items, please consider the sacrifices other families are making, or are they creating additional debt to help pay their bills and just get by? I support fire and rescue. I support our jails and our Sheriff's Department. Those services we need. Our county's parks, it's a very low amount. We should also be considering that. We need to be looking in other areas to trim to make Pasco County a better place. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Jones. I live at two-six-one-five Buffam Place in Holiday, Florida, three-four-six-nine-one. I want to piggyback off of what he had just said about the taxes. I too, my, my taxes have significantly increased also. In Holiday, we have a really safety concern. We have a high crime rate there. I know that I, I live in a cul-de-sac. I mean, not too long ago, I was mowing my front lawn and I had somebody come into my yard. He had a cell phone saying that somebody was trying to kill him and he needed a place to hide. I told him to call nine-one-one. I know that there's been a lot of break-ins, car break-ins. There doesn't seem to be any, you know, patrols. I don't know if it's because we don't have the funding for it. Also, the infrastructure, if you take Sunray, the potholes are huge on a certain section of Sunray. You kind of have to avoid them because you'll blow your tire out. There was also a sinkhole that, or a depression that had opened up on Darlington, just past the, the bridge. And that seems to, they covered it up with, with, with rock. It hasn't been paved over or anything like that. So it is kind of hard to get home. Unfortunately for me, I work from home and I'm not out that often, but when I do go out, I, I want to be able to utilize the road without my car, you know, breaking a tire or whatever, the undercarriage. Those are, those are my main concerns. I'll make it brief. This is my first rodeo. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kristy Zimmer. My address is on your record. I am a Realtor, thirty-seven years. We are taxing our people out of their homes. The people who are having to sell right now are because their taxes have increased exponentially along with their homeowner's insurance. Granted, that's not your ballyhoo, but the taxes are. The assessed values that we're working with right now are grossly inflated, and even though we may have a three percent save our homes cap on there, it's not helpful when the assessments are so high. It's not forgiving at all. Your forgivable loans and the tax abatements are creating a bigger impact and burden on the taxpayers. Parks, I hear these people complaining that they are not getting the money for the parks, yet we have three line items for parks. Where is the money going? If you're going to spend millions of dollars to purchase the property at fifty-two and forty-one that Pinellas County owns under E-LAMP using park money, that we don't need to have to purchase? That because they're paying us taxes on that land, why would we want to buy it? Why aren't we diverting that money back into the recreation facilities in the parks where it belongs? We don't need that property for E-LAMP. I don't know if that one's still on the table, but it has been for a long time. Two years ago, Mike Wells came to you guys and told you it was a good time to reduce the millage rates, but y'all decided not to and got greedy and decided to keep the money. And now with all the overburden of the superdevelopment that's going on, there should not be a question of a tax-based need. But yet, the current residents of Pasco County are having to foot that bill. I would suggest that we tighten our purse strings, cut out the wasteful spending. I don't know what other person in this room is making a hundred thousand plus on a part-time basis like you guys are, so we all need to cut back. Maybe we should start with you. Thank you.
No clapping.
So there is no one else signed up? There are two on WebEx. Do you want to take those first before you call for the public?
First, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak that did not sign up? Come forward and line up. Okay?
And, and when you come to the podium, name and address for the record, and then you'll have your three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nagash and my-
Okay.
My address is three-zero-zero-four-one, South Well Lane, Wesley Chapel, three-three-five-four-three. So I am the president of Tampa Premier League. We are an organizing body for cricket, and we have been doing this for last seven to eight years. I understand all the economic decisions you take and the inflation and all those things. But we have been in the crisis situation since we started. We have been playing cricket on a marshy field, a catchment area, basically, where water gets and collected. There are a lot of potholes and there is a lot of things that are going on. We started with about six teams and now we have moved to sixty teams.
Six-zero?
Six-zero. We have constantly asked for help with the cricket field for the last eight to nine years, and we have been just not getting that help. We have been requested for youth tournaments and youth, that the houses getting built on fifty-four, fifty-six, and so on and so forth, and the population has been increasing. But there is no support to play the sport. Cricket is now an Olympic sport. It has been part of the World Cup. United States have done well in cricket recently. And when we have been seeing so much of population growth and demand growth, but there has been no support for cricket. So I request the County Commissioners to think a little bit for the cricket as a sport as well, because we have been trying to play cricket in Pasco County. And for all the houses that have been growing, there's just one park, which is Wesley Chapel District Park, which we have been sharing it with other sports, and apart from that, we have been playing on the marshy land, which is not fit to play cricket, but we're still playing there because we don't have any choice. So I request all of us, all of you, to just look into it in your budget decisions, and we are there to help you out as well. So that is my request. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ryan Pryor at eighty-nine thirty-one Elkmont Lane, Wesley Chapel, Florida. My name is Ryan Pryor, and I'm the owner of Pryor Baseball Farm. Just really here to just talk a little bit about the parks in general. Been a business owner, been in the community about twenty years. Been in business fifteen years doing baseball. We work with thousands of kids throughout the year in baseball and softball. One of the issues that I have with the parks in general, or just needing more parks really at the end of the day, are things like when registration starts, and this is a perfect example at Wesley Chapel. Registration goes out to the communities of the players from the previous season. They open up registration, registration's open, it's closed within ten minutes. Because the previous, like if it was fall season, they market to fall season, spring is filled up. So any new residents coming into the community are locked out. Wesley Chapel, I know right now, probably has two to three hundred on the waiting list. Okay, so those are two or three hundred kids that were losing to Hillsborough County, not getting engaged. And this might not just be baseball. This could be lots of sports. I don't know. I'm speaking on behalf of the, the baseball community. So that's just one scenario of not having facilities for kids as an outlet. One of the things that I believe in, within my company, is that if there's a problem, there's an opportunity. So what we've done is we've actually started the Pryor Farm League. We pil, we piloted the league in twenty-three. We launched it this summer at Land O' Lakes as a satellite. We had a hundred and, a hundred and thirty-five kids in the program. So we're running seasons outside of the Little League seasons, and now we're going out and reaching out to the Little Leagues and meeting with them to see during their offseason if we can run our Farm League, which is a different format, which I won't get into. It's a development program for education and for development within the sport. So it complements the leagues to put the kids back into the leagues, better equipped to play. That's just trying to solve the problem when the fields are not being used. We try to use them and develop to complement the leagues, so that's the best we can do. But we do need more parks in the, in Pasco County in general for a lot of the sports. And the cricket guy, I've watched him play cricket down there for the last seven years, because we're on soccer turf field sometimes playing as well, so they do, they play cricket in the marsh. So hats off to them. But we do need more parks around Pasco for the kids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Hoffpower, nine-one-three-zero, Dresden Lane. I lived here for my whole life, pretty much. I've actually worked here for over twenty-five years. I've done tons of people's houses, and I tell you, this is the worst time I've ever been around. Most of the people I talk to now can barely afford to be here. Most of them are leaving. I can tell you that. Most of the properties I work on, usually they're leaving or they're fixing their house to turn around and sell it because they can't afford it no more. The insurance is too high. I guess your property taxes are being raised, where it's ridiculous. Even my property tax, I think it's a joke. I thought, you know, when we buy a house, you know, after we pay it off, I, I thought it was ours. But I guess we'll have to pay taxes on it. I don't know where that came from. I thought this was a free place, but I guess it's not. I'm realizing that more and more every year, I can tell you that. I didn't have too much to say. I just, I have a lot to say, but, you know, I've never been up here before. This is my first time, but I tell you, it's really odd that, you know, a lot of people have to go through all this. Half the people I know are older people that can't speak for themselves, so I'm kind of up here for their behalf because they can't get here. I wish that, you know, you guys can consider thinking about that before you, you know, raise your property tax, because, you know, after, after this, well, I can tell you, I'm probably going to move because I ain't going to be here no more, because I tell you what, the property taxes is too high. And my insurance, I don't even have insurance. I don't, because it's too high. I might as well save that money, wait till my house burns down, and I can rebuild it myself instead of having to do it. And that's how I feel about it. But, you know, whatever you guys think, I hope you guys come up with a good agreement to figure out what to do, because I, I don't even think this tax is justified. But, you know, I'm here for the people that can't talk, so I hope that helps you guys out and makes you, gives you a better decision on your judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping.
But good job for your first time.
Hi, Lisa Moretti, one-six-three-three-one, Iowa Woods Trail. As I was watching the budget hearings previously, the workshops and things that we've been going through, it seems like, I mean, this is a fairly sizable budget for a county. We're a large county, but this is still a lot of money. And you've heard today from a lot of residents who are telling you that the way that we are spending our money is not meeting their needs. I spent the weekend in needy muck pulling out stuff out of a creek that no one could seem to figure out how come we can't get the creek to flow. And it's apparently no one's responsibility, so the water's not flowing, which means it's backing up and it's flooding residents' homes. I've been out to other people who are watching as we allow developers to lift their properties. That water has to go somewhere. They're the low spot. Their back fence for their cattle is so far underwater, you can't see the fence posts. So somehow, and they look at me and they say, I'm paying taxes. I'm paying for stormwater. I'm paying for all these things. And yet, my life and our quality of life doesn't work. I'm also talking with a lot of residents who are telling me, I can't stay here anymore. I just can't. I can't afford it. I can't get here. So on top of that, we've also seen a lot of our housing prices for affordable housing skyrocket. Our median house price is three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars. People can't afford that as affordable housing, so they can't live in our county. They work in our county, but they can't afford to live here, which means they aren't part of our community, and that's wrong. So as you, I know you're not going to be able to do much today because you've already been through so much of the process, but as you move forward, I hope you'll stop and think about where the money is being spent and what you're hearing from people as to what they really need, what they really want, because we aren't meeting that need. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Nancy Haywood, three-four-one-one-zero, a nice place. It's nice to see y'all in a different venue. I've got just a couple of short and sweet things to say, which is, I'd like to see the development community pick up parks and recreation and do a lot more for this county. Also, I was wondering if anybody had given any thought to opening up some of the schools to extra over-after-school activities for the people here. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
We have two on WebEx. Do you want to move to WebEx? Okay.
Yep.
So the first one on WebEx is Gina Ballello. Ms. Ballello, you're there.
See your name up here.
Ms. Ballello, if you are speaking, you are on mute.
Okay, now can you hear me?
I can. Name and address for the record, and then you have your three minutes.
Okay, this is for Mr. and Mrs. Ballello. The address, and the address is two-three-eight-two Parabean Way in Wesley Chapel, Florida.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a, a townhouse. It's a small townhouse, very small, only thirteen hundred square feet. And when I purchased it, they told me the price was going to be forty-four hundred dollars for the taxes. Now I'm looking at fifty-one hundred, which is a big gigantic difference, and I'm really not happy with that because I hardly use the place. I'm only there maybe three times, three times a year, which is three weeks in a year. I don't use the schools. I don't use the jails. I don't use the libraries. I don't use anything over there. So why should I have to pay all this money if I hardly even use the place? Is my point, you know?
Got to finish your comments, please.
Is there anything else I should say or any questions that you have?
No, we won't, we won't talk back and forth. It's your comments, your time to speak.
My comment, okay. All right, I mean, it's just I think it's too much to pay for, for something that I hardly use, and I don't think it's fair, you know, especially now. I'm out, you know, I'm out of work because I broke my foot. So I'm out of work for a while. I don't know. I just hope I can go back. You know? I don't know what else to say. I mean, I like the place, but I just think it's too much money and too much of a big jump of a tax increase. Well, you know, it's too much all at once. I could see a small increase, but this is way too much. I mean, I don't know what else to say. That's my main point. I don't use the parks. I don't use the jail. I don't use the, the libraries. I don't use the schools. I mean, I hardly use the place, so I don't see why I should have to pay all this money, and I'm, I'm hardly there, you know. I'm only there a few weeks, you know, a few weeks in a year. And I just think it's just too much, too much of an increase, way too much. So I don't know. What else to say to you? If you have any questions, please ask me.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'll just wait to hear from you through the mail or something?
We still have time on the clock.
Okay, I should have had my husband join me for this. Let me see if he wants to say anything, can you hold on a minute? Larry!
Your time's going to be up if you do.
You want to say anything about the Florida House? You complain about this big increase, beholden?
I think she's been disconnected, so the next person?
All right, so then...
Where was she calling from?
Out of state.
Parabene Way? I don't know. So the next person signed up is Vincent Gariano on WebEx, Mr. Gariano? Are you there, sir? If you are speaking, you are on mute.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Gariano, you there? I heard him. If you are there, make sure you're unmuted, unmuted, and then your name and address for the record.
Hello?
There you are.
Speak.
Hey, how you doing?
Okay, but give us your name and address for the clerk.
Yes, my name's Vince Gariano. My address is 8204 Laura Del Rio Drive, Port Ritchie. So I'll keep this brief, I was here last year, and you did come down a little bit in the millage. It took five hours, I think you all remember that. I'm a retired policeman. I don't get coal increases, and given the fact that my homeowners is doubling next year, and maybe at least we could come together to lower the millage just a little bit and not make this so difficult this year. That's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Got everybody on WebEx?
That's everyone on WebEx.
I see a gentleman that walked up. Were you in the room when I asked everybody that was going to speak in the room to come forward?
Yes, sir.
And you didn't?
No, sir, I was debating whether or not I was going to speak, but I think it's...
Well, I'm going to give you time to speak, because you deserve, we need to hear what you're going to say.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, I'm John Michael Moore, and the president of the Pasco County Professional Firefighters. My address is exempt. Over the last decade, I've committed myself, on behalf of the members, to developing relationships with county leadership forged in trust and transparency. Administrator Carbala, Assistant County Administrator J.J. Murphy remain engaged with us, and subsequently have taught me how to better balance the needs of my members, the Public Safety Branch, and the rest of the county departments under your purview. It is not lost on any of us that the taxpayer provides our livelihoods, and we have an obligation to be good stewards of their money. I am confident that under the leadership of J.J. Murphy and his staff, the fire rescue budget is operating as lean and as efficiently as possible. Notwithstanding the unprecedented growth we are enduring and the unrelenting need to provide emergency services to an exploding population, we will continue to work together to exploit alternative funding sources whenever possible to alleviate the burden on the citizens. Last year, we secured the AFG grant for retrofitting our fire stations with direct source diesel exhaust capture, and have continued those efforts this year. The department received a Firehouse Subs grant to purchase new Swiftwater rescue boats and additional grant funding from the opioid task force that will expand our mobile integrated health program by providing medical care and resource tools to our most vulnerable patients. Along with the International Association of Firefighters, we will continue to advocate for the safer grant request for 24 new firefighters, and will continue to lobby for state-level appropriation requests that prioritize public safety. We have experienced success by working together and look forward to continuing to build our relationship. We acknowledge and respect the difficult position you are in as elected officials, especially during these trying times, and we will do all that we can to help. Thank you, as always, for your continued support of our proud union firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Okay, that's all of our...
That is everyone.
Everyone sign up. All right. We'll move forward. Is there any discussion by the board?
Mr. Chair, it might be appropriate just for the, for the public to perhaps see the presentation that we put forward, if the board would like.
That would be good.
Yes, sir.
Amy Farrell, Budget Director with Pasco County's Office of Management and Budget, and I'm going to show a brief presentation about our final millage rates and budget for fiscal year '25 as a result of the earlier conversation that the board had today. All right, I'm on. All right. So our agenda here, it'll be pretty light, so we're going to touch base on what happened at our first public hearing, then we'll do a quick recap on what happened during the earlier session today, and we'll go over some fiscal year '25 budget highlights and recap of the long process that got us to here, show you the tentative millage rates, and then how those morphed through our earlier discussion today, through the county administrators' recommendations, and then the board's direction, and then proceed with the rest of the hearing. All right, so our first public hearing was two weeks ago, on September 3rd. At that time, the board did adopt zero mills for the Parks Capital Maintenance MSTU, and the board directed staff to come back with some scenarios that included establishing a roads rehabilitation services MSTU while also providing a reduction from the general fund revenue. And so earlier today, the board did vote to direct staff to come back this evening with a general fund millage rate of 7.4292, which is down from the 7.5700 mills that the board adopted last year. The board also directed us to realign $6 million from the Hudson Library Project to the paving program. And so those changes will be reflected in the slides that we now will see. Oh, and the roads rehabilitation, rehabilitation, thank you, rehabilitation services MSTU millage rate, the board gave us direction to set that at 0.4052 for tonight's hearing, which is down from the 0.5184 mills it was from July and the first public hearing. And I do have a slide later on that will show you what that translates into in terms of reduction. Thank you, Mike. All right, so our '25 budget highlights, so...
Wait, I'm sorry, can you go back one slide?
Yes, ma'am.
We also took $6 million from a capital project and moved it over.
Yep.
That's the library, that's...
To help with the paving.
Yep.
Yeah, just want to make sure we say that, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
They did.
All right, so our '25 budget, a big piece of it is continuing to provide essential premier services that the community has come to expect from us. We're also prioritizing keeping the public safe with the sheriff's operating budget, jail expansion personnel, so that way when the, that's the slow build up, so we can staff it once the full construction is completed. And we're continuing to grow our fire response capability. We're maintaining a competitive compensation for our team members to make sure that we can retain strong talent and hire strong talent. We're also streamlining our development and expanding our infrastructure. We're investing in our road infrastructure in the right way by getting rid of the old P-VAS program and moving to this MSTU. And we're also being good stewards of our existing infrastructure, making sure that we're providing those timely reinvestments. Included in that is facilities, and also that bullet right above, right? So making timely reinvestments in our road infrastructure to make sure that our people are safe when they're driving, and our first responders are safe when they need to get out there and respond and help our citizens. All right, so if I take our big budget and I break it down into some key components, right? So the biggest piece is our operating. So think of our operating in terms of things like ensuring our team has the appropriate tools to successfully and efficiently complete the tasks throughout their day. They have PPE necessary when they're out in the field. Think of things like safety vests, so they're clearly visible when they're on the side of the road. Think of steel-toed shoes that will keep their feet safe. Think of stretchers that'll safely get people from accidents into ambulances while also keeping our first responders safe. And we'll pivot to capital, another one of our big pie chunks. So in there, we've got things like a waste-to-energy plan expansion, we've got wastewater treatment plan expansions, road capacity projects, sidewalk projects, stormwater projects, just to name a few. All right, so if I now look at the revenue side of our budget, that bottom gray slide is our ad valorem taxes, so that's our general tax, that's our fire MSTU, our roads MSTU. If I were to move up, that's clockwise, to the larger blue, our charges for service, that's things like our water services, our solid waste, our ambulance transport fees. The permits, fees, and special assessments, that's the green little sliver right there, so that's things like building permits and plan review fees, things like that. All right, so if I pivot to the expense side of our budget, so that green pie slice, that's our physical environment, that's our water utility, solid waste, stormwaters in there. The public safety piece, that lighter blue to the bottom right, that includes the sheriff, our corrections department, our fire rescue team. If I keep moving to the other big piece under general government, that's things like IT infrastructure and maintenance, facilities management, our constitutional officers, say for the sheriff, and some unfunded state mandates come out of that big pie. All right, so let's hone in on our general fund, so that is by and large one of the biggest revenue sources in there is the general tax. So if you look at this big blue piece, plus that yellow sliver that says inflation, that part of the general fund budget is making sure that we're able to continue to provide those premier services that our community has come to expect from our team. The green sliver, 4%, those are things that we have labeled requirements, those are staffing the jail expansion, that's the fourth shift for fire rescue, that is our compensation and study, that is our wage increases for our corrections officers and our firefighters per their contract. The 5% grayish-blue, that's our capital investments from the general fund, and then a small sliver of what we're calling enhancements. Think of those things as positions to meet growth, a department might need a few more staff members in order to provide the same level of service, or maybe there's a new program that they're looking to do. All right, so now if I were to break that down into types of services provided, you will see that 52% of our general fund allocation is for public safety, so that's sheriff, corrections, our fire team, and our administrative team that supports our public safety branch. Then we've got general government, which is what I had listed before, IT infrastructure and maintenance, facilities management, our other constitutional officers, unfunded state mandates, culture and recreation, that's our parks and libraries. All right, so the first bit on this list are some of those unfunded state mandates that we had talked about. Anything that's bold and italicized would fall under that unfunded state mandate. The rest on that list are things that the board has decided to fund. All right, so we do now have all of our constitutional officer proposed budgets. Most of them saw some increase, except the supervisor of elections, next year's an off cycle, so as per usual, we do see a decrease on those off-cycle years where he doesn't need as much for his operations. All right, so the sheriff's budget includes 40 additional deputies, the sheriff is funding 20 new deputies with his 40% of his increased budget, and the board is matching another 20 deputies for that. We've also included some one-time expenses like SWAT vehicles and armored vans, upgraded forensic unit resources, a pole barn to keep his equipment safe, starting up his gap insurance funding. All right, in this budget is a, we've got a five-year capital improvement plan to the tune of $1.8 billion budget, but remember, tonight, we're just adopting the fiscal year '25 amount, which is that first column. We like to present the five-year look, but we do adopt on a single-year basis. Now, if I were to break down our transportation engineering capital into large buckets by type of work, you can see what we're putting towards capacity, think new roads, major maintenance, multimodal, that's a lot of your pedestrian sidewalk, things like that, bike trails, safety and intersections, and signal updates. All right, so this chart here are the tentative millage rates from the first public hearing. Now, like I said, based off this morning, we are coming to you with a final adopted budget recommendation that decreases two of the millage rates on this slide. The first operating general millage, that has come down, and the roads rehabilitation services MSTU in the fourth line, that one has also come down. All right, so earlier today, the county administrator made a recommendation to decrease the general fund operating millage from 7.5700 mills to 7.4292. The board voted for me and my team to come back with a budget to reflect those changes. Mike, do you want to go over your recommended?
Sure, I'll just recap what I, what I had mentioned is, you know, we had, we had gone back for the board's direction after the first public hearing and listening to what the public and the feedback that the board had given with, with the idea that we needed to go ahead and make some reductions in, in spending. And so we, we took a deeper look at our TIF paving funds, I won't get into the detail of that, but those are funds that would have ordinarily been utilized for road paving. We knew that with the Parks MSTU coming on board and the board's prioritization of public safety, that we felt that we could fund additional deputies for the sheriff to help satisfy his ask. He requested a total of 60 deputies in his, in his budget. I think between the board and the sheriff, we were able to forward 40 deputies, which I think is a fantastic nod to public safety. But we also took an even deeper look and recognized that while there was, while there still is additional need in public works for paving, repairs, landscaping, and those types of things, that it would be prudent to go ahead and curl back $3.5 million on a recurring basis back to the taxpayers. And so that was, that was the first point. We also looked to optimize the timing of our public safety staff members, and so we are expanding the jail, we will need to hire more corrections officers, we are opening new fire stations at a, at a pretty rapid clip. However, the timing of, of construction and hiring, we took a very deep, detailed look at how we could make those timings work even better. It's already a factor, but we, we looked at that, and I felt comfortable on a recurring basis, cutting back an additional $2 million back to the taxpayers on, on that front, with the understanding that with future valuation increases, we will have to pay for those at some point in time, but, but I think for the time being, we can, we can do without. Reducing new investments, again, there is a lot of important things that, that I think that we need to do, but there are some things that can wait. So cut a little bit into the facilities reinvestment budget that we had set aside, that fixes things like air conditioning, that, that does, does a lot of things for our current public buildings, but, you know, taking a little bit of a 20% reduction in that, I think, I think we can, we can do without, and, you know, handle those things on an emergency basis if we need to, as well as those enhancement that, that Amy was talking about. You know what, we, we don't have to hire all the new staff that we necessarily need, we can do a little bit more with, with what we currently have. All of that in conjunction, at the same time, not making any reductions to the constitutional budgets. Again, the sheriff needs additional dollars to do, to do his job, we are not recommending we, we touch any of that. And as Amy astutely pointed out, 90% of our existing budget, 90%, is already going towards public, you know, those, those services such as public safety, our facilities management, our parks and our libraries, half of it going to public safety in and of itself. We estimate that even though that's about a $7.25 million annual savings, that over five years, with the compounding effect of growth, it actually equates to about a $43 million savings to taxpayers over the next five years by making that, that simple reduction. So we heard what you said, and I'm happy that the team was able to help answer that call. Next slide. The remainder, the remainder then of our discussion focused on the, the road paving MSTU? And that, that paving MSTU millage is a significant reduction than what was originally proposed?
And Mike?
Yes, Chairman?
Go ahead. And for the gentleman asked about his paving, he says he's already paying?
Yeah, I want to cover that, actually, and I'll, I'll hit on that in just a second. So again, the board was presented with options. Again, we have a $2 billion road problem in this county. The current, the current means of paving that is the citizens must vote to tax themselves if they want their roads fixed, and that has put the board in between disputes with, with citizens and folks making the call as to when a road should be paved or not paved. Our Public Works Department has an excellent... Our public works department has an excellent program that they have developed through this road paving MSTU to basically take that and use a science-based approach and do road rehabbing when road rehabbing is needed, so in other words, we may not need to go and completely mill and repave a road, we can simply use rejuvenation strategies, which are pennies on the dollar compared to complete road reconstruction and repaving projects, which, again, I think one of the gentlemen that came forward talked about a $4,300 PVAS assessment for his share of the road, you know, the cost to do a rejuvenation, that could be the cost of an entire rejuvenation for an entire street versus a reconstruction project. To answer the question regarding PVAS, this board also directed us, when we were adopting the new PVAS program, to retire PVAS and to avoid sort of that trap of double taxation. And so as such, PVAS loans, actually, we haven't even put them on the rolls this year, those PVASs are not on there, and so folks will not be taxed again for the road. For those that paid in advance, like this gentleman said, whatever amount would be remaining on a normal payment plan, that amount, we have an administrative process that we will develop to refund those dollars. So for example, I wrote down $4,300 for this particular gentleman, if that was a 10-year PVAS, and let's say he was one year into pain, the rest of his neighbors were one year into pain, technically he would be, $430 would be technically spent, because that's what his neighbors would have already paid, but the difference between the $4,300 and the $430 that remainder would be refundable, because that's essentially what we're refunding is those that opted to not, those that opted to do a payment plan, I hope that makes sense, but basically it's the unpaid balance.
And he's shaking his head, yes.
Good. But we'll have an administrative process for that, that'll be developed to go forward on that, so I see the board may want to have some discussion, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, thank you Chairman. Mr. Carvall, so when folks receive their reimbursement, the example you're using with the gentleman in the crowd, is the plan for the clerk to send them a check directly?
I don't have the details, yeah, I don't have the details on how we will do that, I mean, I, you know, we do recognize that we need $6 million of money upfront to do those refunds, so I mean, I assume there would be a cash outlay.
Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Yes, sure.
The clerk would not be just figuring out who owes money, or who's owed money and sent checks, there will be an application process where somebody applies for a refund from the county, and then county administration sends that request to the clerk's office, and a board check goes out to them, issuing them that refund.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney, well, I certainly hope that should this thing move forward, that we don't have to wait for folks to apply to get their money back, that they, you know, we do some sort of PR campaign, that way folks can get what's theirs back in their pocket.
Yeah, we'll have that advertised on the website and how that administrative process will go forward, thank you. Yep. So ultimately, where we, during the course of the discussion this afternoon, the .4052 mills would generate, I'll just say approximately $19 million of money that would be utilized towards paving, again, you know, every amount is substantial when it comes to doing that. I believe Mr. Mickel stated that that would pave approximately 65 miles of local roads and 10 miles of arterial collector roads for next year, which is inclusive of, I almost was remiss, the reduction in one of the library capital projects, right, so the Hudson Library renovation was part of a voter-approved general obligation bond, prices went up, we weren't able to afford to do that, so we've added that to the capital plan, but we've reduced the budget by 6 million and are looking to add that to paving, so essentially performing at a higher level of paving, at least for next year, but still trying to be sensitive to where that rate is set. So, and then of course, then the board directed us to reduce the general fund millage as recommended to 7.4292. Go ahead, next slide.
Just a comment, Chair, and just also that including, just to tell everybody, in that paving budget, there is, they will be doing sidewalks as well, so that's been a big concern with the schools and kids walking, and so that will happen as well.
And fixing some drainage.
We have a number, correct, road-related drains, we have a number of, we have a number of programs, and again, the need is longer typically, like I said, we have a $2 billion problem in the county, so, well, if we can tackle it $20 million at a time, great, I do think that this will be one tax that you will see that the results of that publicly. So this slide here kind of shows where we started and where we have ended up, so if you look in July, which is when we set the actual trim, and this is what is published on everyone's tax notices, we started with a general fund millage rate of 7.57, a parks MSTU and a roads MSTU, you can see, you can do the quick math, what the cost per $100,000 of taxable value is on that. During the first public hearing, the board adopted zero on the parks MSTU, so that $17.12 was reduced immediately. During this morning's session, when we came back, and what we're proposing to you from where we started, is an additional reduction in the general fund millage, as well as what was proposed on the roads MSTU. So essentially, the board has looked at reducing $42.52 per $100,000 of taxable value as a result of the public hearing process and understanding the budget at this point, I'll turn it back over to Amy.
All right, so then here is the table of the updated millage rates, and like we said, the two that changed was the general operating and the roads rehabilitation MSTU from what you had been seeing throughout the budget up to this point. All right, so any further board discussion?
Any other discussion? See your mind?
I sent Mr. Carvall a page from how Florida counties compare, and I've got one more, and I'll send it straight to you then. Dee Razella, yeah, so sending you one more. I just wanted the public to see this, because I, and I think you hear a little bit about the struggles that we have as county commissioners when we know that people have financial challenges, but we also know we have a responsibility to provide services, so we work very hard up here to find the right balance, and it's not easy, it's not easy, so this is from the How Florida Counties Compare, it's done by Florida Tax Watch, they take the same information from all the counties, it's not always able to be apples to apples, but let me just say, Pasco County is the 11th largest county in the state of Florida, and we are different from many other counties, because we don't have any big cities. So in other cities, say Tampa, Miami, oh, Miami-Dade's different, Orlando, the city may fund their parks and recs department and their libraries, we don't have that here, I don't think we have any cities that really have any parks where kids go play football or baseball or any of those things, it all falls on the county government, so we're a county government that has some responsibilities of a city. So as the 11th largest county in the state, and I'm sorry it's so fuzzy, this says average total property tax millage rates, we are, can someone pick it up from, we are 28. All right, go to the next slide.
Be patient, he is our assistant budget director.
He's usually in a spreadsheet.
Okay, this one is, oh, no, you went too far, because I got to read that header, sorry. Per capita county government property tax levies, that means per, if you took the population and you divided it, we're the 11th largest county, we are, where are we?
30.
And then the next one, please. So I want you to look at the cultural and parks and recs department on the right-hand side, again, 11th largest county in the state. We fund our parks department at 47th, there are, we have the 47th smallest budget, I mean, there's 46 counties ahead of us with larger budgets, so we're doing the best we can with what we have, we really are, and it's not easy, it's not easy to craft this budget, we work on it for eight months, we are a conservative county, and we try and put out the best bang for the buck that we can here in this county, so that was what I wanted to say, Commissioner.
Okay. Anything else?
No more construction, discussion? Is there a motion to adopt the rate, the millage rate for the general fund of 7.4292 mills? Someone?
Second.
I got a motion and a second, is this roll call?
No.
It is not.
Nope. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, here none, pass 5-0. Okay, all right, is there a motion to adopt the millage rate for the Transportation Trust Fund of 0.0000 mills?
Do you want to make that one?
I'll move approval.
That's a good one there.
Sure.
Move approval, all right, I got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed 5-0. Yes, ma'am?
I will now provide a summary of the Fire Municipal Service Taxing Unit Budget stating the tentative military, the percentage change from the rolled-back rate, and the reasons for the change. The Fire Municipal Service Taxing Unit Fund has a recommended tax levy of 2.1225 mills. This represents a 7.98% increase from the rolled-back rate of 1.9657. The increase in property values results in an additional 13.1 million in property tax revenue. The budget includes implementing Phase 1 of the DSHA for fire personnel and a wage increase for the IAFF union. I would ask the board to accept public comment and then vote on the Fire Municipal Service Taxing Unit Fund Millage Rate and Associated Budget. The minimum vote for this hearing is four votes.
Does anyone wish to speak to the board regarding the Fire Municipal Service Taxing Unit? Anyone in public wish to speak?
There is no one signed up and no one on WebEx that's different from who spoke earlier.
Oh, can they speak again on these items?
Yes, it's a separate public hearing.
Okay, on this particular one, is there anyone wish to speak to this item? With that, is there a motion to adopt the rate of 2.125, 225 mills?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
2.1225.
2.1225 mills for the Fire Municipal Service Taxing Unit.
Mr. Chair, ma'am?
Yes?
Commissioner Stark made a motion, I'll second the motion, Mr. John Michael, no battling this year, but thank you guys for all you do.
Yep, that goes without saying, we thank them all the time for the help they give our sentences, okay, I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign on they, or, okay, see no one, it passed 5-0.
I will now provide a summary of the two new municipal service taxing unit MSTU budgets stating the millage rates, the percentage change from the rolled-back rate, and the reasons for the change. The Parks Capital Maintenance MSTU Fund was not approved at the first public hearing and then, and therefore, has a tax levy of 0.000 mills. This is the first year that this millage is proposed to be levied, so there is no calculated rolled-back rate. I would ask the board to accept public comment and then vote on the Parks Capital Maintenance MSTU millage rate.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak to the board regarding the Parks Capital Maintenance MSTU?
That went away?
That went away, it's zero.
That went to zero.
So we have no maintenance for any, for future parks, so, okay, no public comment? See no one? Entertain a motion?
Approval.
I got a motion, a motion to adopt the millage rate of 0.0000 mills for the Parks Capital Maintenance MSTU. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Reluctantly.
Okay, all opposed, like sign, see no one, hearing none, passes 5-0.
The Roads Rehabilitation MSTU Fund has a recommended tax levy of 0.4052 mills. This is the first year that this millage is proposed to be levied, so there is no calculated rolled-back rate. This millage rate will generate 19.4 million in property tax revenue to maintain the county's roadway network. I would ask the board to accept public comment and then vote on the Roads Rehabilitation MSTU Millage Rate and Associated Budget. Since this is the first time this millage rate will be levied, state statutes indicate that unanimous vote is required to levy any millage rate.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak to the Roads Rehabilitation MSTU? See no one? Is there a motion to adopt the millage rate of 0.4052 mills for the Roads Rehabilitation MSTU? Someone? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign, here none, motion passed 5-0.
I will now provide a summary of the nine voter-approved debt service millage rates. These millage rates are levied to repay the debt service for the general obligation bonds to include two tranches each for the jail projects, the parks and recreation projects, and the libraries projects, as well as three tranches for the fire rescue projects. The nine individual millage rates are listed on Table 1 in your handout, rather than read this chart into the record, we have provided copies to each commissioner, board records, and members of the audience. The total of the nine voter-approved debt service millage rates is 0.2401 mills, this is a decrease of 0.0316 mills from the 2024 actual millage rates of 0.2717 mills. I ask the board to accept public comment and then vote on each debt service millage rate. There is no vote requirement for these millage rates, so a simple majority or three votes is needed.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak to this item?
Library?
See no one? Oh, hold on.
Therefore, general obligation bond millage rate.
Does that include library?
There is a library one, yes.
This is jail.
Name and address.
All right, name and address when you get to the podium.
Brian on file, Brian Paris on file. I think we should actually fund the parks over the libraries myself personally, most people can get books online these days, more people I see using the parks to exercise and, you know, just to get out and, you get, you know, people need that, it's a good mental break just to be able to hear the birds.
This is bonded indebtedness, this is not their budget.
It's not a budget.
It's not, it's not, this is, this is the voter-approved bonds that went to libraries, parks, fire rescue, and jail.
So it's not about raising the millage then?
It's not one that we approve.
Okay, well, either way, we should still fund parks over libraries, I mean.
We're past that.
Okay, well, whatever.
I'm sorry, sir.
Next year.
Thank you. Okay, all right.
So, for purposes of the audience, this is the four voter-approved general obligation bonds that the board, that voters approved, the board took, funded these projects with bonded indebtedness, this is paying back those bondholders that gave the county the money at the millage rates that were necessary based on the dollars that were received, so it is, it is an obligation of the board to basically pay off their car loan on these projects.
And I believe this was in 2018.
They were all issued, the public approved it in 2018, and the years that are on this are the actual tranches of funding that were taken incrementally to fund projects, whether they were in parks, whether they were the jail. they were in parks, whether they were the jail, whether they were fire rescue.
But it was our-- and I think we got the greatest citizens in Pasco County, because they all approved these by vote to the public, and it wasn't something we did, it was something they did, and they love our county just as well as we do. We got the best citizens ever here in Pasco. All right, so--
Can I just-- can I have our county manager, Mike? Can you explain to the public that we are putting some money in parks, it's just not in the form of an MSTU?
Yes, yes, Commissioner. So, as part of the budget, when the Parks MSTU in its current form failed and the board wants to take this up next year, you know, to kind of look at alternatives to it, we did make sure that we restored money that we would have reallocated back to the parks' budget. So, while it's not probably nearly what would have been generated under the Parks MSTU, it still restores the parks' budget to where it was to make sure that there isn't a reduction in where we are. And that was about 1.3 million, so about $1 million to do restorative capital-type projects through our parks, as well as another $300,000 to do parks maintenance.
Thank you for clearing that up. I just wanted the public to know that there is money going to parks.
But not that it was going to be $8 million a year, no, $1 million a year.
We also got a parks impact fee approved that when the new homeowner or new person moves in and they bring their kids and they're adding kids to all the fields, we have an impact fee with parks that will help build those fields in the future. So, in the future, on a short term, we're going to be a little short of maintenance, but in the future, we've got to readdress that one day. But we are going to get in the money, the people that don't live here right now will be paying for the new parks.
Yes, sir, that's correct. The board adopted a higher impact fee to assess new development for the investment in parks. That's reflected in the Parks Capital Program--
Right.
--that has been adopted with budget.
There were some folks worried about that when we were getting answered questions.
One comment. And also, just looking out for the citizens, because we heard you, and we did not want a parks tax and a road tax, so we took that into consideration as well.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adopt a millage rate of 0.0256 mills for the 2019A jail facility bond?
Move approval.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those nay votes, same sign. Hearing none? It passed 5-0. Is there a motion to adopt the millage rate of 0.0204 mills for the 2019B fire rescue bond?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt a millage rate of 0.0096 mills for the 2019C parks, recreation, and natural resources bond?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0. Is there a motion to adopt the millage rate of 0.0094 mills for the 2019D libraries bond?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0. Is there a motion to adopt a millage rate of 0.0416 mills for the 2020A fire rescue bond?
Move approval.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0. Is there a motion to adopt a millage rate of 0.0187 mills? Oh, okay. 0.0087 mills for the 2021A libraries bond?
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0.
We have to watch her done.
Is there a motion to adopt a millage rate of 0.1073 mills for the 2021B jail bond?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0. Is there a motion to adopt a millage rate of 0.0131 mills for the 2022A parks, recreation, and natural resources bond?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those that oppose, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0. Is there a motion to adopt a millage rate of 0.0044 mills for the 2024A fire rescue bond?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0.
I will now provide a summary of the remainder of the budget. If you refer to Table 2 in your handout, you will see by-- you will see the revenue sources and allocations identified by type without regard to individual funds as stated prior to any action taken by the board tonight. The budget totals $2,249,943,417 net of inter-fund transfers. I would ask the board to accept public comment then vote on the budget. There is no vote requirement for the budget, so a simple majority or three votes is needed.
Okay. We will now see public comment on the budget. Does anyone wish to speak to this item? Seeing no one? I will entertain a motion to adopt fiscal year 2025 budget as outlined by staff, including those adjustments made since the tentative public hearing presented to the county commission at its regular meeting earlier today. So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0.
The actions you have taken today has set the final aggregate millage at 9.8597 mills, which reflects an increase of 6.95% above the rolled-back rate. I will now read the resolution adopting the millage rates by title only. A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of the Pasco County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ADVOLORM taxes for Pasco County for fiscal year 2025, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval of the resolution adopting the final levying of ADVOLORM taxes for Pasco County for the year 2025?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none? The motion passed 5-0.
I will now read the resolution adopting the budget by title only. A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval of the resolution adopting the final budget for the Pasco County for fiscal year 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none? Motion passed 5-0. This concludes the final public hearing to adopt the final millage rates and the final budget for fiscal year 2025. Any other things? Go, Rich.
Where's our recycle bin?
For a journey.